Good evening and welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for today, Monday, June 5. Like to call this meeting to order. We are, we have met compliance with our official notifications. Go call please.
Nick Schumacher.
Here.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Lynn Albrecht.
Here.
Here, President Olson.
Here.
Steve Stubeck is excused.
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered, and it is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by completing a public comment signup sheet and handing it into our deputy clerk. Any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration is not allowed. Comments should be respectful on the items being considered by the board and will be restricted two, three minutes in length. Action taken at today's meeting is to forward, is to be forwarded, is to forward the recommendation for final approval at the next regular school board meeting. First up, we have our report from our superintendent.
Welcome.
Welcome.
All right. Well, our first item is informational and last year was our first year where we wanted to recognize a guest teacher of the year. Our guest teachers play a valuable role in our school district. They help us facilitate professional development when we need our teams to come out. Obviously, when there's absences and throughout the, throughout the school, they help us cover those absences. And so this year, we asked our staff to nominate this year's teacher, guest teacher of the year, and this year I want to recognize Janie Faust. Our gift and a certificate. I do want to read some of the nominations that we received about Janie. So, and this is just a handful. There was many of them. Says Janie comes to school every day wearing a smile and sharing kind words. She's very dependable. She makes it easy to write a lesson plan for. She's flexible and can easily move from K to fifth grade. She builds relationships with all students in our building and is very much a part of our school community. Someone else says she's always willing to step up. She is there with some of our toughest classes, any grade level, any specialist. She is experienced enough to handle all of the curriculum, so you can leave the plans and know she will carry on just fine. She will do half days, full days, whatever she's available. She remembers students' names. She's kind and smiley. She does everything you would want a guest teacher to do. We are so blessed to have her in our school district. So there are many more, but those are some of the good ones. So. Thanks for coming tonight.
Janie really is a crafty veteran of the school district. Many years.
And she's afraid of nothing.
You don't have to stay. Good evening.
Thank you. Okay, our next informational item is Principal Kalen is here to share some updates about Bryant Elementary. Welcome.
Thank you.
On the final week of school.
I apparently have too many slides for my presentation, so.
I did not proof this ahead of time. I'm sorry.
I'm gonna be really good at summarizing today. So I'm just gonna talk a lot about our celebrations and some of our results. So some big celebrations and one part of that is gonna be our E M L S S support this year, and I'm gonna let them kind of, Kate's got a great presentation and we're gonna cover that with. So what we have done as staff together this year is we have met vertically and within our grade levels, and that has been a big part of our success because we have eyes on at all grades. And that goes to show that not only with our E M L S S support, but also our support staff and our staff working together to make changes to meet the needs of all of our students. Our professionals, through their feedback, through the surveys, they, they feel connected to our school, but they also feel connected to our staff. We're starting to involve them a lot in some of the in-school training. So we're getting them trained in on specifically how to and what to work with our students, so they feel very valued. And then on top of that, we had a two counselor structure this year that was amazing and made some significant gains with helping our students' social, emotional support. Unfortunately, we'll be down to one next year, but we're, we learned a lot this year and we're gonna make ends meet next year. Some of the challenges that we face, and I think this is probably pretty consistent amongst all buildings, is that there is a significant lack of accessible community resources to provide medical, mental health, or social, emotional support for our students. We do our best within the building and, and that's, we do. Our counselors, our staff, we all work together to support those students, but those medical facilities within and around our area that aren't open or have room for some of those kids that more have greater needs aren't necessarily there, and that's been tough to try and find help for them. The other one is our student attendance. Currently, right now, we have eighteen, almost nineteen percent of our students who are legally truant at Bryant. Almost forty percent of those students have had ten absences or more throughout the year. I will say this, Eva and I had a pretty high percentage of meeting. Eva's our social worker that works with all of our, our elementary buildings, and we've had forty-four scheduled attendance meetings. We've actually met with thirty-eight families. We had two today with family. Even up in the last week of school, we're trying to make a difference with attendance in our building, trying to focus on next year, what we can do differently. So that's been huge. Eva's been amazing. Without her, I don't know how we would do attendance. I know that we're gonna miss her at the beginning of the year, next year, because she'll be on maternity leave, but she, she left us with some, we're set up pretty good to make some ends meet, but that's been a pretty big issue. Obviously, we keep those kids that aren't there. These are the goals. We were focused on our three through five forward exam on the E L A. We want sixty percent proficient or advanced, and we also focused on our social, emotional behavior of our Sabers component. We want eighty-five percent of our students low risk or better. Some of those action steps that we took to put in place, we implemented the core universal curriculum, but we were very intentional about being intense with our interventions. We wanted to set up a really good system with our E M L S S, our staff and our support staff onboard, and we were pretty successful, I think. We'll speak more to that later, but we, we have some really good things set in place for next year. Our teachers and counselors implemented the core universal curriculum with that second step, restorative practice and P B I N, P B I S initiative. And I thought we did really well. Our P B I S system is set up pretty good at Bryant Elementary right now. That's attributed to its coordinator, Jimmy Malu, but that also to our staff and how they kind of, and support staff, how they kind of keep that P B I S structure running. And then, of course, we, we did administer the Saber screening each trimester. To progress, let me just summarize. Like I said earlier, our S L T leadership team does a really good job of putting us in a good position to lead the entire group. We worked collaboratively in all of our staff development meetings where we actually put together the structures that we were going to then be intentional about the next thirty days or the next sixty days. We are data, we were data-driven. We looked at what we had. We made changes each and every time, and they brought that back to their classrooms to implement them. And it was a full team effort. Teachers, Kelly Jobin, our E M L S S instructor, and our support staff were, and our counselors were into it. So we did a really good job of being intentional with that. Here's some of our FastBridge data. It's not our Forward data, because we're not gonna get that until summer, but a lot of celebrations can be taken from here. This is our two, five reading results. And if you take a look at the light gray and the green, and you can see that it's fall, winter, spring for each grade level. So it's a, there's three bars for each grade level, and you can look at that third bar for each grade level. There's a lot of blue and there's a lot of green. That means that we made gains. We didn't quite reach our S L A goal of twenty percent increase, but we got really close. We're at about eighteen percent, seventeen and a half, eighteen percent. So we're there. We made progress and we're pretty proud of it. This is our K one group here. You can see that our, our first grade there was our most significant gains. I think they had like eighty percent were low risk or better, eighty-five percent, which was awesome. And then our kindergarten also. All groups pretty much made gains. We had some issues with our upper levels, but we, we, we connected that a lot with some of the social, emotional stuff that were happening in that group as well. So overall, some big gains. If we project out, I don't know what type of correlation FastBridge has with Forward, but right now with FastBridge, sixty-one percent of our three through five kids are proficient or they have met or exceeded FastBridge. If they carry that over, we're gonna meet our, our overall C I P goal that we had at the beginning of the year. But that's to see how that correlates. And then our FastBridge social, emotional goal, you can see we were kind of all dug in here. We developed a good system of meeting behaviorally around our, our C S T meetings, which is our child study teams, where we put together a group of people that talk about kids to see how we can support them in the classroom, get parents involved, and make plans based on that. So one big thing that we did counselor-wise is that Sabers is only a three-time-a-year type of a system where we can check. It wasn't enough for us. We had some significant needs. So our two counselors talked about implementing a closed gap system. It's another system where we can collect data on kids every day or multiple times during the week, and it flags them if they're significantly, you know, if they're having a bad week. We get it in time, and if we get a red flag on a kid, my counselors are in that classroom that morning talking to that child to figure out what's going on. And so we're gonna continue with that next year, so that was kind of a, a big progress monitoring tool that we're gonna put in place. This is our Sabers data. I know you can't really read it, but again, a lot of green means good. The last one here, we have some, the last one, we didn't get quite all the kids checked off in our fifth grade group with our teachers. This is how our teachers rated our kids. This is how our kids rated our kids. This is them rating themselves. You can see the last couple of bars over there, the last six bars are my fourth and my fifth grade, where we see that we had the most struggle with our social, emotional health this year. So again, focusing on that in future years with some of the systems that we put in place this year. However, we did get very close to our overall goal of eighty-five percent of our students are falling into the low, low-risk category. We're at right now currently eighty percent. So we did make progress throughout the year, again, getting very close to our goal.
You did good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Good visuals. All right, is Paul with us? There he is, right there. Okay. There he is. Okay. Hi, Paul. Can you hear us?
I can hear you great.
All right. Well, you are the third and the final informational item on my report. This is Amy. Just so everybody knows, a year ago, we updated, I think it was a year ago, we updated our S R O policy, and a part of that policy update was to get an annual update on our partnership with the Superior Police Department and our S R O in general, as well as our S R O program. And so thank you, Paul, for joining us virtually. I'm gonna kind of pass it to you if that sounds okay.
Sounds great. Thank you. And I thank you for being flexible and allow me to attend this virtually. We're headed down to Madison for a site visit with their kind of version of a pre-arrest drug diversion program. So I'm somewhere in the middle between Superior and Madison right now, hanging out at the gas station. Technology's amazing. I'd like to, this will be a fairly brief update, but I'd like to update you on three areas. The first area is our S R O update. Officer Matt Swanson was selected to fill the S R O position at the Superior Middle School with the retirement of Officer Mike Kendall. I'm excited to have Matt in that position. I think he's gonna do really well. He's already attended the basic S R O school through Nazro, and he'll be attending the advanced S R O school this summer before the school starts. So he's been working with Officer Kendall before he retired for about a month and a half. So I think he's got a pretty good grip on the school, and it'll be an easy transition over there. So that's exciting. Another, the second thing I wanted to update you on was kind of the initiatives that we set out to accomplish for this school year. And I just wanted to give you an update on where we're at with those. We completed mass or active shooter response training for all of our officers that included a fairly high level and somewhat painful in some cases, active shooter training at the middle school, which was well-received by the officers and gave us a lot of points to work on and improve on. And I think we, we were better at, better off coming out of that. So that was really good. We also accomplished the staging of some critical mass casualty incident supplies at the schools so that if an event ever took place, we would be more equipped to respond to those events. Those were our major initiatives for twenty-two and twenty-three. And as we look forward to the next year, we want to expand on the staging of kind of those mass casualty supplies at the schools. That would include things like medical supplies that, you know, our teams could treat victims with to stabilize them quicker and just reducing the amount of stuff that we would have to bring to a scene. We have set out to improve the law enforcement and Superior School District communications process, particularly when it comes to response to mass casualty incidents. Our school district hasn't been immune from the swatting kind of thing that's been happening across the country. And we experienced that this year, and it actually gave us an opportunity to assess how we would respond, and particularly how we'd communicate with the school district, how an actual response to an incident would look. So it, as bad as swatting incidents are and as, as much hassle as they can cause, it was actually a good opportunity for us to see what things would look like in real life in that response. So it gave us some points to work on. One of the things that we set out to do was improve not only our communication with the school district, but our communication with the community at large. So we are working with the Douglas County Sheriff's Department, the Communication Center, to create a more standardized protocol for alerting community members to significant incidents, and also on how we respond to the schools during reports of mass casualty incidents. So that's been making really good progress, and I'm sure we'll have a good system in place and tested before the start of the school year. Not only that, but we are, we're looking at expanding our general response plans across the city for mass casualty incidents. We've been working closely with the fire department to identify staging areas, command center locations, so that those are predetermined in significant events, so we don't have to spend time thinking about where those things are gonna be placed. Routes of travel, all of those things. The more we can pre-plan, and the more we can pre-plan in a way that offers flexibility to have a response based on the situation that we're facing, the better off we're gonna be. Those are gonna be our main initiatives for twenty-three and twenty-four. We've been working with the, the Drug Coalition to address vaping, and that's not something necessarily that, you know, is school-specific, but it's community-wide, to address underage access to vaping products. Having children that attend the schools, I recognize that that is a, that's an issue that, that should be addressed. So we're looking for ways to be creative and reduce access for vaping products to youths. I don't have statistics, something that Officer Kendall always got to me, but I don't, I didn't get those this year for obvious reasons. But, so I don't have statistics or statistics to share with you or anything like that. What I can tell you is anecdotally, it's been a fairly similar year to last year. Besides the swatting incident, a couple of other things, there haven't been, you know, a bunch of significant incidents at the school. Everything's been kind of moving along just fine. So with that, I'd like to open it up to questions, and I'll field whoever you got.
Questions?
Good enough.
I have no questions. You are comprehensive and complete your presentation.
Well, thank you very much, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right. Thanks for joining us. We'll be in touch.
Thank you. Safe travels.
All right. With that, I have two action items. Are you okay if I bring those up? You ready? Okay. Both of these action items are field trips. We have our teachers here to answer questions specific to these field trip requests. They're incredible field trip options, really. So I'm gonna just kind of lean on our staff here to kind of share some updates. So the first trip is specific to international travel to Italy. Do you guys want to talk a little bit about that?
We're gonna kind of present together.
Yeah, that's good.
So for about the past ten years, we've been taking during spring break, Sarah Bianca and Shawna Anderson got the Washington DC trip really going this past spring. Eighty-seven people to Washington DC and New York. And we've had multiple requests for what other trips are available, what other trips are out there. So I'm proposing a trip for June of twenty twenty-four, it'd be after school is out, to California, San Francisco, Los Angeles.
That's the second one on your list there. Yep.
And I'm proposing to Italy also June two thousand twenty-four, and I went with my incoming last field trip. And I have an interest in being a group leader, but I'd try it out. I've been working with Mike and.
And EF, the tour company just does an amazing job. They, they really do a lot of planning. We do the pre-planning, getting the people in, getting them signed up, getting them that information, and then once more on the trip, they, they've got everything covered. From nighttime security to what we do during the day.
Meeting us at the airport, picking us up.
And I, you know, having eighty-six people with, I was prior to leaving a little bit, you know, worried. But once, once we got going, they, like, they did everything. I think it'll be an amazing experience to offer up to.
Can you talk a little bit about the funding and where that comes from?
Yeah. So it is funded by the families. If they want opportunities for fundraising, they can do that right through the EF tour company. It's more like a GoFundMe, and then a hundred percent of their donations go to that student's trip. There are scholarship opportunities available if they want to apply. It's a little bit of work. I talked with the travel agent. It's writing an essay about how this trip would make them a better, better global leader in the future. So family-funded, they can set up their own donation page. They can apply for a scholarship if they want to.
A large amount of my travelers also did fundraisers. They sold quick trip cards. They did, participated in the haunted house last fall. I think what else, what else they did, sold pizzas. They, they worked their butts off and were able to pay for, in some cases, a good chunk of the trip.
And the district does not pay for this trip, right? I had a few friends on social media that I followed for the DC trip, and I was thoroughly impressed with how much, I mean, it is packed days. You see everything. It really looked awesome.
And they, yeah, it's, it's just busy enough that the kids are engaged, that they don't fall off, but yeah, you keep, you keep going.
Yes.
I learned a lot on that trip.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Doesn't sound like it. All right. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So because they are action items, then we'll need motions and seconds to approve.
Do we do them separately?
Motion to approve the Italy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the Italy trip. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion to approve California.
Motion and a second for the California trip in June of two thousand twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Thanks again for coming. Right, that concludes my report.
Next up are our committee agenda reports. First up is the Personnel and Negotiations Committee with Brooke.
It's now me. All right, I have one action item here. Administration recommends approval of the June twenty twenty-three new hires, transfers, and separations report.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I have no discussion items and no informational items, so that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Next up is our Teaching and Learning Committee. Nick Schumacher is our chair.
Great. So we have no action items, no discussion items. Informational items, Kristen Hitzman. Nailed it. All right. Instruction, summer school updates, summer professional development.
Um, summer is actually a very, very busy time for the Department of Teaching and Learning as we prepare teachers and kid staff for the upcoming school year. So I wanted to give you two quick updates about some things that are going on this summer. First of all, as you know, summer school is ready to roll. It will start on Monday, June nineteenth. We have downsized to only three elementary sites this summer, and we weren't really sure how that would go with our enrollment. But we have about the same enrollment as last year. Last year, at this time, we had four hundred and four students enrolled, and right now we have four hundred and thirty-four. So families and students want to participate in summer school, even if it's not for all of them at their homeschool, which is exciting, and we're happy about that. Um, we actually have doubled, almost doubled, the amount of incoming four K students for summer school, which is a new program that we started last year that Jen runs and the students attend at Cooper. And both at our middle school and high school, we've got enrollment just like usual. So it's all ready to roll. We'll have drama camp participating at the middle school. We'll have our credit recovery, personal wellness, geometry, and smart and strength and fitness students all attending at the high school, and we're ready to roll. So a lot of the directors, transportation, food service, buildings and grounds, it takes work really hard to make sure summer school's ready, and everyone's doing their part. So we're ready to roll for summer school. The other thing that I wanted to update you about is our summer professional development. Not everybody always knows that our teachers do a lot of hard work in the summer, doing some of those longer projects that they don't have time to really plan for in the middle of the school year when they're teaching. So we have currently thirty-six P L Cs, which are professional learning communities, which is about a hundred and twenty middle school and high school teachers that have requested summer work hours to work on some of their unit planning, their proficiency tables, their timelines, things related to their teaching and learning. So we'll support them with that. We sent those emails out to them last week, and sometimes principals help them, sometimes I do. Sometimes our instructional coaches help them and give them support on things they, they need help with. A couple of other trainings that we have coming up this summer. We are providing a teacher clarity training for our middle school and high school teachers on August seventh and tenth. We will be providing mentor training for all of the teachers who are going to mentor a new teacher next year. So we provide that in the summer. And then our shared leadership teams for each of our buildings will meet on either June thirteenth or June twentieth, and then again in August for three days, where they'll be planning for the upcoming school year and our staff development days, setting goals for the schools, for those continuous improvement plans, and looking at data. So that's just some of the things that are on the calendar for summer that I wanted you to know about. You have any questions?
It's always busy.
And it's very busy.
I was just.
Teacher clarity training. Yep. So it's actually something that all of our middle school and high school math teachers took part in this winter. We had a trainer come from CISA twelve, who specifically has a background in math, and she helped teams, our P L Cs, so all of the teachers that teach the same grade, same course, look at all of their essential standards and all of their learning outcomes for their students to ensure that they are progressing kind of through the timeline of a school year and what you would teach students. For example, in seventh grade social studies or ninth grade algebra. It just helps them provide some more clarity for themselves and for their students on what, what they're actually teaching.
It's clarity around standards.
Yep.
It feels like the sentence doesn't finish. Clear.
I know. Clarity. Yes, around the standard.
Yeah, there you go. Okay.
Yes. Good question.
Thanks, Crystal.
Thanks, Crystal. All right, up next, Kate Tesh, Director of Continuous Improvement and Assessments. I'm just gonna say E M L S S, so I don't see all the words. And.
I have a whole group of very intelligent people joining us tonight. Our E M L S S crew is all here, super thankful for all of you to be here tonight. So we, hey, Tesh, you all know me. I will introduce everyone behind me in just a minute. We're gonna give you just an overview. I know you've heard the term E M L S S a whole bunch this year, mostly from principals as they present, and I've shared as well. Again, it stands for Equitable Multi-Level Systems of Support. It's a really big, long phrase that they kept adding words to, right, to capture everything around how we support students when they haven't yet mastered standards and how we're intervening. There used to be a phrase called R T I, Response to Intervention, that has been kind of absorbed in this new acronym.
And it's D P I's acronym. We didn't make.
We had the M L S S. We added the E before they did, and then they jumped on our bandwagon. We have a large group, and I'd like to introduce.
We have a large group, and I'd like to introduce everyone because I think they're more important than I am. So Sarah Barnes is our EMLSS teacher at Lake Superior. Brittany Janowitz is at Four Corners. Stand up, look at her. Jasmine Harrelson is at Northern Lights. Kelly Jobin is at Bryant. Erin is at. Your last name?
Oh, Botany.
See, I knew I should have just followed the thing. Erin Botany is also at Northern Lights. Martine Ferg is at Great Lakes. And Emily Sharrow is at Cooper. So our whole team is here. I'm very proud to have worked with them all year. Last year, getting ready, and this year as well. So Sarah's gonna help me present some information to you tonight that we all worked on together, and I appreciate their work. We are also heavily supported, myself included, by our instructional coaches, and we have two of them here tonight. Amy Patel and Sarah Hollingsworth.
Oh, look at them standing. Look at.
And Intubator also supports us as well. So big team. And then our work is to make sure that the principals and the structures in the buildings are consistent district-wide, and we're able to provide those supports for kids and have the data and resources that we need to do that. So a little bit of history here in Superior, EMLSS, the term may be new, but we have been working to intervene when kids aren't yet meeting standards historically. So this isn't a new thing, but our systematic process in which we do intervene with our EMLSS teachers is significantly enhanced since their positions were created. So now we have system structures and leaders in all of our buildings helping support principals with not only intervening and working with kids, and you'll hear more about that from Sarah, but also analyzing data, figuring out what do we need to do when, and making specific plans building-wide, not just students-based. So our data has told us for a long time, this is a snip of our forward exam ELA data, English and Language Arts, from last year. Remember, our data is always very lagging from the state. And the red, you can see that our our below basic and basic percentages, grades three, four, five. We are continuously working to intervene with kids who are not proficient readers, and that comes through in this information significantly. So we've worked hard to establish a framework and a system, K six, K five, and expanding that K eight in the next year. Working to put a guidebook together. I'll share this presentation with you when we're finished, so you can dig in a little bit more, and there's some more data to look more closely at. But we have created a guidebook, kind of a guiding piece that's helping us know who does what, when, and with whom across the district. And I think that's really powerful when we're intervening for kids.
Great. So the seven of us all came straight out of classrooms last year. So while we've had some systems in place in the past to help support those kids, you know, the reason that we all come and do this job is because we want to help those kids that have a hard time learning. And it came with some challenges when you were doing that with a full classroom full of kids. The interventions have rarely been consistent from building to building, and oftentimes even from classroom to classroom. You do the very best that you can every single day, but it's really hard to stick to something really consistently day after day. Diagnostic assessments are really key to intervening with kids. If we don't know exactly where they're struggling, it makes it really hard to fill those gaps and then start building on that. And so when you're trying to do that with your little reading groups, well, a full classroom is is working around you, it makes it challenging. So it says, it wasn't, it says, it wasn't always feasible for a classroom teacher to deliver daily interventions. So today, just for fun, I thought I'm gonna write down the other things that teachers are talking about in the lunchroom that they had to do today that wasn't teaching. And there was kill a spider, put on a Band-Aid, talk kids that were really upset about something that went on on the playground, juggle the materials that were not handled the way they were supposed to be, other behavior issues, tying shoes, and the list goes on and on. So when you're doing that, at the same time that you're trying to teach reading groups, you are not going to get that consistency from day to day to week to week. And when you do have a really good run where you're, I've met with those lowest kids every day for a couple of weeks, doing really, really well with that, then you have the issue of progress monitoring. So progress monitoring is where we check the things that we've taught and make sure those children picked up on that. So we know, do we need to make changes in our groups? Do we need to make changes in what we're teaching them? And that's really hard to do in a busy classroom full of kids because it's a little one-minute timed test. And so any distractions are gonna affect how they do. Some, especially the older kids, are a little bit self-conscious of other kids hearing them reading or seeing what level the materials they're using are. So that is a challenge as well. So because of that, we sometimes have a potential for over-referral because as a teacher, if I'm doing the very best that I can and I'm trying to run these interventions, and the student still isn't making progress, as the months tick by, I'm getting more and more nervous. And so I'm gonna go to that child study team and say, I need some help. I'm not getting them where they're at. Help me out. And because there was nothing in between to help out. So that's kind of historically where we were at coming into this position.
I think this is a really powerful quote, and we know that reading skills, especially early literacy skills, are extremely critical for future success. We all know that as successful adults, and we watch students who struggle to read, and it is a very critical skill. So this the impact happening early is important, and I think you'll see how we really tried to focus on our primary grades so that we can reduce this as a statistic in our district. This is another statistic and graphic, I think that helps kind of paint the picture. The early literacy, the earlier we can intervene, our research shows, obviously, it has more of an impact. And and that grade level tends to hover right around third grade, and it has been there since the eighties and nineties, when a lot of that research came out around third third grade being a really critical kind of tipping point where kids now are expected to be fluent readers. And now you're gonna see some super fun things while Sarah talks a little bit more about what it is they actually do on a day-to-day basis.
This is the part I really wanted to talk about. And and the word that I think every one of us would tell you is this position this year has been magical. Truly, it is, it brings back that feeling that we had coming out of college where we were gonna change the world, because we all felt like we had a little taste of that in all kinds of little small victories this year. The number one thing that we do is every single day we provide interventions for some of our struggling readers throughout the district. We get them in small groups that are based on areas that they need help and support on. Because we have them in small groups like that, we are able to administer those diagnostic tests as well as the big screening FastBridge tests. We can give some smaller ones to find out exactly where some of those holes are. We then have a chance to provide really explicit, systematic, intensive interventions. And every one of us has been surprised by how much we've learned this year about the teaching of reading. I thought I had that down pat. I taught kindergarten for thirty years, and I thought I knew what I was doing. I can't believe how much I didn't know. And and it really has been a joy. We have a chance to meet most Mondays with each other virtually, and then we come together at times in person and look at our data, look at where we're going, and we can say, okay, I've got some that aren't blending. What am I doing wrong? What are you trying? And that has led us into some professional development where we've read, what does the research say about the most effective ways to help these specific things? And go back and tweak what we're doing. We bring that to our fearless leaders, and they help problem-solve some of that as well. See, the groups that we've made have been fluid, and that's been really a joy too for the kids as well as for us. With this progress monitoring that we do every single week through FastBridge, the kids come and do a little test, and they are so excited. Did my score go up? Did my score go up? And what was nice is that even on those weeks where their score might have dipped back a little bit, then it climbs back up, and we could show them every week, FastBridge instantly, as soon as they're done with their test, gives a graph, so you click on their name and they can see their graph. And for them to see that bar climbing and climbing through the year was so empowering. They started to feel like readers, they started to feel like they could do that. Another really great thing about it is the chance to collaborate with our colleagues. So we don't do this alone. The the growth that our kids have made is hugely a result of their classroom teachers. What we've been able to do is provide an extra level of support for those kids, so they're getting their full group reading instruction, they're getting their reading group time with their classroom teacher, and they're getting time with us. And they get that every single day because we aren't being pulled for other things. See, so when we collaborate with our colleagues, we can help them with interventions for some of their tier two and and tier one students, if they've got kids that need extra things, or even kids that need an additional challenge, we can help support them with that. We can help teachers set up their own progress monitoring if they want to do that for their tier two kids, or in an area like math, or a reading comprehension that's different from what we're doing. We can help them understand the FastBridge data after, that's been a new system for everybody. So to have all of us be able to collaborate with them and show them how that data can affect what they do with their reading groups has been really, really terrific. And so now you're gonna get to see these fun little faces. These are our little readers doing some of the different things that they do when they come down to our rooms. You'll see a lot of magnet trays with letters where they're where they're making words and changing. So we'll tell them to write the word flat. Now, can you change a letter to make that say? Like the splat. And they'll switch them out. And then we might say to change a letter and say, now, what new word did you make? And then they have to flip it around the other way and read that. You'll see kids that are writing words, spelling words, making words. You'll see kids with books, you'll see kids working on sight words. They just, it's active, and the smiles on their faces, those kids love to come to our rooms. And that was something I was really worried about. Is, oh, this is gonna be one of those things, these are even our fifth graders, where it's like, huh, do I have to go with you? And it hasn't been that way. And you'll read some testimonials at the end here of comments that the teachers and and parents have made about our program. A couple of additional things, we participate in our SST, our Child Study Meetings and our Special Ed Meetings. And that that leaves a person that will know where those kids left off at the end of this year and be right there, ready to scoop them up and keep moving them forward next year if they still need support. We communicate with the school psychologists, the counselors, the principals about needs from the kids. We oversee a program called Read Live Naturally, and that supports another additional hundred and forty students beyond the ones that we see directly. That's a program that takes place in the classroom, and the teaching assistants check them, but it's a reading fluency program that's had a lot of success. And so we help support that and move those kids' reading levels up as they're able to move. We're all part of the shared leadership team, so we're part of staff development, both in the building and at grade levels, and are aware of what is taking place with that. We do parent communication and attend conferences for our students. And then most of all is we're an extra person to make those really, really unique connections with our kids. We get little letters stuck under our doors. We have a chance sometimes to listen to something that's going on in their lives that maybe they don't have time or the privacy in their regular classroom. Sometimes kids need a break from their classroom, and they can come down to our room and just de-escalate while we're teaching a little reading group, and it's less overwhelming. But but even in the hallways, to be able to say hi and greet them and have another adult who really cares about them, who spends thirty minutes with them every day has been a real gift.
Thank you.
Little bit of data around the work that we've been doing this year. Because our groups are really fluid, polling data is not easy because we're not talking about the same kids all year long, which is what that is a success in and of itself. So what you see here on the left, you see the number of students receiving intensive interventions, working with one of our EMLSS teachers. Fall, winter, and spring, those are our benchmark periods. So we broke it down that way. And then each color represents a grade level, kindergarten through fifth grade. It does go chronologically across left to right. You can see in the fall, we didn't intentionally start seeing very many kindergarteners. We wanted them to be kindergartners and experience their classroom and not assume a gap had yet formed. So really, we didn't start seeing many kindergarteners until the winter and then started to intervene. You can see, as I mentioned before, first grade is a significant grade level, and that number encompasses many of our kids who were able to then exit and add new kids in, so that those groupings were very fluid in first grade. Again, second grade, another large chunk of the total. And that looks a little different at each building, but it's pretty consistent as we collected all of our data. And then on the right, specific highlights of kids at each grade level that no longer needed intensive intervention. Some of our kids need potentially less, we can reduce, we can modify the intervention, but these were kids we were successfully able to exit completely. And I think now that spring has happened, you would see even more added to this. How we chose to represent the achievement data, on the left you see early reading composite. So this is our kindergarten and first graders. And it it shows their percentile from fall to winter to spring. Now, these are not all the same kids, but the kids that were seen and receiving intensive interventions in the fall and then the winter, and then the spring, kindergarten and first grade in the orangish darker orange color, that would be students in the zero to fourteenth percentile on the benchmark assessment. So that's the same assessment every kindergartner takes. It's not a different assessment. By the winter, you can see that we had, we were now seeing more kids, and they were more in the highest risk category. And as we move to spring, this is exactly what we want to see. We want to see that red bar drop, and we want to see our other two bars increase. And to reach the fortieth percentile nationally, those are national percentile norms, is a significant accomplishment. So we have many kids who are not receiving intensive interventions that have not reached the fortieth percentile. So that is significant and dramatic. And on this right side, you can see the same information as a composite of grades two through five. So this encompasses all of our elementary kids broken down K one and two through five. And we see the same shift in the graphical representation of their benchmark assessments by spring. So we were pleased with the data. We see struggles kind of through winter, and it does take a long time. I think that's the piece that we've continued to advocate. It is not a six-week fix for many kids who have reading gaps. We need intensive intervention for a lengthy period of time, but we can see by the spring we're getting there. So we're pretty proud, and they should all be extremely proud of the work, as well as the teachers that they're working with. I will share this again slideshow with you. We have some pretty phenomenal testimonials from teachers who have shared with our EMLSS team. Just thank you, and impressive work from teachers, and also some parents as well, just comments to excitement that their kids are now reading. So we just had a few of those at the end as some celebrations. I know that was a lot of information. I think it's really important, and they have done an amazing job navigating a new position, seeing their their buildings for the first time, like as a whole, when you're interacting with all of your colleagues, and really making a difference with our kids and closing some of those gaps. And I think it's really powerful. So I want to thank all of you, and I appreciate your time tonight, and all of the work you've done this year has been very impressive. Proud to work with you. Lot? Questions? Comments?
You mentioned something, because right now it's just K through five, right? Did you mention something about K through eight?
Right now, our focus at the middle school next year is really going to be around kind of creating a system within their structure. I don't know, you know, it looks a little different when you become, when you move on to a secondary level, but being more intensive and intentional about the intervention structure. but being more intensive and intentional about the intervention structure at the middle school is a work in progress that Mr. Lebers and I are working also.
Do you, are students put into that strictly off testing or is it teachers identifying certain kids as well?
All of the above, yep. So looking at the assessment data, having conversations, principals. The structure looks a little different in each building, but essentially there are data conversations happening.
Because They need us a team, right?
Needing us a team. One test score doesn't define the kid, so we never want that to happen in that context. So the conversation is really important.
And it's only reading?
This, we do have some, some of you in their schedules. They are able to support some math, a lot of our math support right now because there's only so much time in the day. We started with the intensive piece in reading. We had a second person. Love to duplicate this with a math focus, but some of them have been able to support teachers with some math strategies, our coaches as well, where we can. Time is limited.
I will say you're done? Well, nothing yet. During our visits, I think every principal highlighted the need for EMLSS teachers. Say if there's one thing you couldn't
Yeah.
A group of you, so.
Why we had him come.
Clearly, clearly there's a difference being made if, you know, that's what their bosses are saying essentially as well.
Jason, that every day. You don't know how lucky you are to have Kelly in the role she has because I would have all that for that. I'm so kind. So yeah. Awesome. Thanks for sharing.
And I was kind of hoping each one would take a slide so I could hear. They're quiet.
I gave Kelly the opportunity to present mine.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
All right, Nick, it's hungry.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Do you see any kids falling in and out of this, like repeats throughout the year?
Yes, you have some come, please come back. Yeah, or move to a different group that's more appropriate. Yeah, so we do have more movement, like, oh, this isn't quite fitting. We're going to try like this strategy. You need something different. So there's some movement there. We might see, I would argue that if they have exited, they are successfully showing, they're carrying that over into the classroom. They're not, they're not kicking them out, you know, too soon. So they're very conscientious about, do they have the skills to transfer this in the classroom before they exit from the group? So a different intervention potentially. Or to read naturally or like support that's a little bit less intensive.
The other nice thing is we had the two teachers at Northern Lights and I had, had two little girls who were at their school. Then they came to my school and then they went back to her school. And what was neat is they would come back and they're like, oh yeah, we're doing this. I might be a book ahead or a book behind, but they're like, oh yeah, we're doing this. And they knew right where to grab their dry erase board and how to move their magnets and because we're doing the same thing. And that was really lovely. Yeah.
Yeah. Do we have anything structured in, I hate the word structure, honest to God, but summer school? For kids to have any programs where kids can
We don't. I mean, our summer school philosophical approach is, you know, enrichment. I'm enjoyable to be there. It's been several years since we've had an approach of students come to summer school to get a reading or math intervention. However, all of our elementary summer school teachers provide, you know, a well-rounded piece of their reading, writing, doing all of those things in what they do in summer school. At the middle school, we have a specific math class that students can choose. So some may excel, some may need some extra support and so they're getting reinforcement there. So not specifically sign up for summer school or a program to get support, but.
Wouldn't you say one of the most important things our kids can do over the summer is read books?
Yeah.
That is an intervention in itself.
And I, I do think Sarah made the point and all of them made the point last week, how great it is at this point in the year in having transition conversations. Okay, we're talking about our second grade group going to third grade. They know and who have any new kids moving in, like in September, I'm going to start right here with this group. And we're, so now knowing the kids, I think that is exciting. Looking forward to the fall. Any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to say, when you said that your job and your physician is magical, I got teary eyed. And I'm, I'm an emotional person, but it just, you could feel the passion that I'm sure all of you ladies have for this and the love and care for these kids. And that's really important work that you guys are doing. So thank you very much for what you guys are doing.
Thank you. I told them they could run as fast as they can. And I have to stand here for another item. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
All right. I guess I gotta go. My last, just very briefly, by state statute, I'm required to give you an AGR update. AGR stands for Achievement Gap Reduction. And we receive support from the DPI for our schools that are school-wide Title I funded schools. So elementary schools that qualify for AGR, which I'm giving you this report on, are our five schools, not including four corners. So all of our elementary schools. And the reports that the principals submit to the DPI in June are based on a reading goal and a math goal for kindergarten, first, second and third grades. So what I do for the principals is I compile all of their data around those specific goals. In kindergarten, we are reporting on letter sound achievement and decodable word achievement. In math, number identification and number sequencing. In first grade, decodable words and sight words. So that kind of ramps up a little bit. And then in math, decomposing numbers and place value. So for each principal, I go, we go through the data from our spring benchmark testing in Fastbridge and identify the students who have met the 40th percentile. And then from there, we also identify students who have made growth. So the goal is they either meet the benchmark, the 40th percentile, or they demonstrate growth. Our ranges, depending on the assessment, we hover somewhere around the 80, 70 to 80% are meeting the benchmark with between 90 and 100% showing growth. So, and we look at that growth from fall to spring. The principals each have a report and will submit all of that to the DPI. For second and third grade, we look at A-reading and auto-reading. So it's a combination within the Fastbridge data. And then we look at A-math and auto-math fluency as well for both of those grade levels. So it's a data picture that we are setting goals, reporting on goals. I would love for it to be more connected to the school CIP, but unfortunately the DPI has a different template that they would like used instead of our CPI or CIP. I feel comfortable about the growth at this time. We can't really compare to last year because we have a new assessment, the Fastbridge assessment. So next fall will be our first fall where we will start to be able to compare to hopefully see the, the trend moving like we did with our EMLSS data. That's my very brief overview of the AGR requirement. If you have questions, just let me know. Anything now? All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, kid.
Anything else?
That's it?
That's it?
What else do I say? It's my first time.
It's just wonderful.
Oh wait, do we have an acronym list that I can get?
All right, next up is the Budget Insurance Committee. Mr. Stupak is not here. I will take that. First action item is gifts, grants and bequests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in May of 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Archie, now, was, um, was that for a state tournament or? I see the girls swim donation. For those that don't know, for quite a few years now, Liz Petrowski was an outstanding swimmer here at the high school. Pays for the student fees for the girls in that program, so.
Every year.
Every three. That's significant. See, we're still getting money in for all night grad party, which I heard was quite successful.
It's pretty impressive. Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry's. Next action item is a resolution providing for the defeasance and prepayment and redemption of a portion of the outstanding general obligation school improvement bonds, Series 2018, establishing an escrow account and authorizing an escrow agreement.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Shannon, you want to?
Yep.
Should we see if Dave can explain this one?
Or Dave?
He's like, what?
Uh, this is the one that got bumped from me. But June, years ago, we did this where we made a, it's basically your simple terms, we make an extra debt payment. Last two years, we've levied in excess in Fund 39 twofold. One, two, panically that levy flat and the mill rate has led us possible. It's been tough with the equalized values going up so high. I'd rather see the peaks and valleys on that mill rate and levy. You're, you have the ability to levy more in Fund 39, your debt service. So we've done that. We're to the point now where we're going to make an extra debt payment. So it's back and it shaves off some of that debt and saves on the interest. We don't have the actual resolution. It will be an action item for next week. It's Thursday.
Okay. I will talk to the ground. Get it on Wednesday so we can get it out.
Questions and further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry. There are no discussion items. There are two informational items. The first is activities fees for the 24, 25 school year.
Um, I'll talk a little bit about this. I was looking to see if it was an action item if there had to be motion. Um, so typically this is not necessarily a board action, but this is not something we have revisited in quite some time. I want to say more than 10 years. I'm looking at Ella. Might even longer than that.
It is.
Yeah. So we felt it was time to review our activity fees across all of our activities. And we thought a good place to start was to be, to compare with other school districts and how they have their structures. And so Ella, will you just talk a little bit about why tier two, tier three and tier four are a little bit, why those look and feel different?
Yeah, I think tier one, you know, we look at travel costs. I, I guess my biggest opinion, and I don't mean to offend you, Mr. President, is our officiating costs are really high and they're continuing to go up. And it's, it's across the state. It's not just up here, not just those certain officials. It's, uh, it's, it's really hard to get officials to come and wear games for many reasons. But this is my shameless plug about sportsmanship and being nice to people. But that's, that's one of the biggest fees. And if you look at those top two tiers, football, basketball and hockey, those are, you know, we need the most officials every night for those games and three different levels for all of them.
Can I just speak to the hockey?
Yeah.
You know, hockey is identified differently on here primarily due to the facility costs that we take on to, to be able to provide our, our hockey program. And as you can see, it's still lower than many school districts around us, but we, we do feel that we need to help support that facility rental.
Yeah, for sure. And I think the tiers two, kind of throw that the purchase services, the general umbrella that includes officiating and then also the game workers, taking tickets, the clock, all the workers. So you can kind of see that goes from top to bottom. Now, every tier is going up in costs this year and this removal of that three years, just like everything else. Transportation, we can be able to touch that, of course, but you know, with golf across country, you see some of those tenants, they're, they're starting to get more fees to be in tournaments or paying golf courses more to golf there because they're losing revenue when schools come on. So I, I think it's just a general, everything's going up. And I, the nice thing about it is a lot of our, our kids and our families play sports when they're young and they're playing a lot more than this per season to participate in youth activities. So it's still a quote unquote deal to play high school athletics, but we want to have as many kids as possible playing in these sports.
It's important to note that students who can't afford do qualify for free reduced fees. And I will also say, when I, when I did the math and I look at the number of participants and what this would mean for an increase in revenue for our district, when we consider the amount of students who also get free reduced fees, this generates approximately about $40,000 in additional revenue for our district. So.
Yeah, I was going to mention the same thing. As a parent of elementary kids, I pay more than these fees. And then I do see at the bottom, there's the family maximum too, which does help families out as well. So I think it's, and seeing the comparables, I think it's very reasonable here.
Biggest thing, the one thing that I just think is super important is we have students representing us all around the state. It's so important that we keep them able to do this. And I think these fees are realistic. I don't think it's a huge jump, but like you said before, there, we have meters in place to try to help everybody be a part of it, right? So the, the free and reduced lunch comes directly from Jamie's office and we just kind of, we double check that. And, and then if there's students that aren't on that and are just having a hard time, it can come to me at any time. We have hardship funds and we just want as many people on as possible.
We know that when students participate in our extracurricular activities, they're more likely to do well in school, more likely to graduate. So this is an important component to our, our school district. Okay. So thanks, Ella, for that.
Anything else? Board members? Another informational item, then, the fund ten revenue and expenditure reports.
Stretch. So a couple of the biggest, largest outstanding items that we have on the revenue side, they come directly from DPI. That is a report that comes out of going June 20th. We go ahead and make those entries so that, that's where we can wrap up those. We also have some brand names that we're working on. Those will continue through the month of June as we have some payroll items still to process. But after that, you'll, you'll obviously see that $22 million mark amount get a lot smaller. And then the expenditure side. Again, you know, we're in the home stretch. I believe that purchasing has been shut off. Do exceptions here. Students are in class through this week. From the district level, we're obviously still purchasing things through the end of June. One of the largest items that we still have to process yet is we take those summer payrolls for the teaching staff and they have to be pushed back into this fiscal year. So we have to work with HR to get that entry done and that should take us a large portion of that 9.9 million. And then we just have to make that special education transfer. Again, we can't do that until everything else has been settled and we know that exact dollar amount.
Anything else from anybody? All right, that concludes that report. Who wants to take the legislative report? You got her?
All you gotta do is read. You said, oh, you talked.
I know. All right. There's no action items, no discussion items, informational items. New LFB projections, tax collections to grow slightly less than previous estimates. The Legislative Fiscal Bureau today projected state, state tax collections over the next two years would come in 755.1 million lower than what the agency expected just four months ago. Even with that dip, Wisconsin's budget forecast still shows that they're collecting about 6.9 billion more than anticipated by the end of this June.
And there is the full article. And all information comes from the WASB Legislative Update page. And there's still not much to report from the Joint Finance Committee yet. So we're still waiting.
It's Friday. They have
Oh, I hadn't seen it. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was something.
Yeah.
Hey, thanks, Brooke.
Operations committee, Mr. Allred. We have two action items tonight. First is administrations recommends approval of resolution 22-01 as compliance maintenance resolution. That is attached. Yes. So.
Need a motion and a second.
Want me to read through it?
Do you need a motion first?
I think we need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Got a motion and a second.
Have a little bit of a, Bobby gave a little bit of a synopsis, if you want to read that or do you want to read through the?
I'll read through this.
Okay.
See, all right. Be resolved that the School District of Superior of Wisconsin informs the Department of Natural Resources that the following actions were taken by the Superior Board of Education. First, reviewed the results of the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. Second, set forth the following actions necessary to maintain effluent requirements contained in the WPDES, which is Wisconsin Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. Um, maintain the system as per standards, supply adequate training for operations and management, discharge through sand filters if the pre-discharge sampling indicates total suspended solids are anywhere close to the limits and perform additional removal of aquatic vegetation. And then last, discharge through sand filters if the pre-discharge sampling indicates the biological oxygen demand, which is BOD, is anywhere close to the limit and consider other act, aeration methods as necessary. What did Bobby have to say?
Well, I just want to say, on the resolution, it says the 5th of June, but it really should say the 12th of June because officially they'll approve it next week if you approve it, right?
12th.
I just, and then you suggested also, just formatting wise, what would be resolved, not just resolved.
Sounds better than.
Yeah. We can make that feel like that.
People kind of make, you know, this is something that's done every year.
Yeah.
Yep, it's just an annual thing.
And this is specific to the wastewater, right? Yeah, at Four Corners, yeah.
And I know there's the, is that the annual maintenance report?
Yep.
It was, I want to have him as the, the TSS or the Total Suspended Solids. It's an F.
So, I think I got.
Got a response.
One, that was an F.
We got all As with the exception of one area. We received an F on the TSS numbers. This is not due to anyone's fault, but preliminary test results were good. If we started, when we started the discharge, the first test during the discharge wasn't good. Then, at that point, we shut down the discharge. Um, however, the DNR still gives an F grade for that. It sounds like they, they did respond to the one, but yeah, they'll go back and change the grade.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, the Administration recommends an increase for all students and staff lunches that will take effect on July 1st, 2023. There's an attachment for that. It's like, most of all, went up about 10 cents.
I'm assuming just increasing cost of food.
Jamie, do you want to talk about that at all?
Say hello. Uh, we do this every year, except we haven't had to because meals are free for the last three plus years with COVID. Um, we don't look at this very lightly. I know it's only a dime or 15 cents, but when it's, you know, three and four kids in a family, you're beating them twice times. We, we know that it goes, it goes fast. So, just recommending this increase due to labor and food costs.
All right, thanks. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying.
I don't think we got a motion.
We didn't have a motion. Didn't have a motion.
Not yet.
Okay. That's true. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have no discussion items, we have one informational items and that's an update on summer food service from.
Director of the Year, Shane.
That's right.
Um, so here we are with our program. Everybody looks to Friday for school ending. Um, we meet up on Friday and see when kids get out of school. And while we start Monday, hitting kids out in the community. Um, we hit these four locations with our food service van and our team is out in the community. And then starting the following Monday, we've explored the six parking wreck sites as well as all five. Um, schools, the three elementary, the middle and the high school and the Boys and Girls Club at the middle school. Um, and then it switches again in August where we start a, um, program, excuse me, for the athletes that start coming back. And as we were talking about fees earlier, one thing we realize when we come in the door here, when I did, is 50% free and reduced is where our population lies, that our students generally, you know, those programs are 50% kids who needs meals too. So, we provide programs at the high school when kids are coming back to school, um, to participate in sports. So, that keeps us busy through August as well as supporting these programs. Okay?
All right.
Hmm.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Are there, are there any other matters to be brought before the committee? Anybody got anything? Well, that concludes the Operations Committee's report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Albert? Our last report this evening, it's policies and rules. Ladies?
Sorry.
Got a few things.
Um, and we do need to take each one of these separately.
All right, so, there's about 12, 11 policies and handful of technical changes. Uh, the action item is Administration proposes the approval of changes to following policies based on Neola recommendations in order to be in compliance with federal law updates. This is gonna be wave one of many policy updates in the near future here, so.
So, we met, uh, last week, was last week, um, and just kind of talked about, uh, a schedule to push out these updates so that we can get up to date with all of our Neola updates. The first couple that are on here are what I kind of categorize as minor changes. The rest of these are specific to business office and we thought, we wanted to get these on the June agenda. Um, as Shannon is transitioning away from our district, David's coming on. We thought this would be a good time to put this on the June agenda. So, the majority of these really are budget, or I mean, um, business office related, so.
We want to do a motion for each one? We need.
I think so.
So, the first one is first reading of Policy 3112, Board Staff Communication.
Second.
Motion a second, we should have discussion maybe?
Yeah.
Anybody have discussion on it? Do you need me to read or?
No, no, no.
Can everybody read?
Please, lose your voice by the end of the meeting. Unless there's any suggestions, we'll bring it forward in the same capacity next, next week.
Oh, sorry, is there any discussion? All right, no discussion. Uh, all those in favor of 3112, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That one passes. Moving on to first reading of Policy 5540, Schools and Governmental Agencies.
Prove.
Second.
There's a motion a second and discussion.
It's a small addition to that policy.
Yeah, just a new paragraph.
Yep.
Is there any discussion whatsoever? With no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now it passes. The next one is first reading, Policy 5830, Fundraising. Motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion a second and discussion.
There's just an addition here for student-led fundraising.
Jamie, did you want to add any dialogue to this? Just kind of, this isn't, because this is consistent with what we currently do.
Yeah. Groups and students don't allow to sell anything during school hours that competes against a federally funded program for our students. And now it's just in writing and we, that's what we follow.
That's what we've been doing.
Yeah.
That, that includes before and after school.
30 minutes.
Right. And that's in the before and after. Right, the intention of it to be eating on property.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, same if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our first reading of new policy 6147, Debt Management Replaces Borrowing.
Move to approve. Second.
Second discussion.
Just, I want to point out that on the bargaining, or I'm sorry, the borrowing policy that would be eliminated from a formatting perspective, it'll be struck out next week as we move this forward. So, it'll demonstrate that that would be eliminated and this one would replace it. So, that'll be struck out.
Any other discussion? A discussion, all those in favor, same if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one, first reading of policy 6150, Tuition Income.
To prove.
Second.
Motion a second, discussion. Oh, it's very, any, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, same if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Next one, reading policy 6235, Fund Balance.
Second.
Any discussion?
Shannon or David, is there anything you want to speak to? This is consistent with our current practices, so it's just putting it in policy.
It's just suffering. Be unsigned, signed, restricted and non-spendable. I don't read the current one. All of those listed. It's adding definitions for those.
That, okay.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Any more discussion amongst you two? All those in favor, same if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Uh, next one is first read of new policy 6630, Cash Handling and Deposits.
Move to approve. Second.
And discussion.
This is the one that I meant to ask the question. We currently, I was confused, I was like, why is it not all green? Is there anything unique about this? Okay.
Important one for us, the business office to have the backing of the policy for the way that the cash is handled within schools and having the ability to enforce the policy and also for minimizing the subject. Plus, it's here and, and updated and just without it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, same if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. First reading of policy 6830, Audit.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Any more discussion? All those in favor, same if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. First reading of policy 7230, Gifts, Grants and Bequests.
To prove.
Second.
Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor, same if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. First reading of policy 7310, Position of Personal Property.
To approve. Second.
Discussion. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, same if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. First reading of policy 7455, Account Systems for Capital Assets.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Anybody?
I'll just say as part of discussion, thank you to Anne for putting all these together because it was a lot of work.
Oh, I bet.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, same if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
You could probably take the technical changes in one motion if you wanted to. You don't have to, I just.
Well, I had a question.
Oh, okay, great.
I was gonna email it, but I figured.
Oh, let's talk about her.
Um, next, next one is see technical changes below. Technical changes do not alter the policy's intent, but rather provide minor language changes that improve the quality and/or consistency of the policy.
So, do we have to move to approve first?
Let me.
Discussion?
Should I just read the titles quick here?
Oh.
Yeah, just, just read.
The first one is 3111, Creating a Position Professional Staff. Next one is 4111, Creating a Position for Support Staff. 3132, Vacancies for Professional Staff. 4132, Vacancies for Support Staff. 4130, Assignment and Transfer. 5341, Emergency Medical Authorization. And 6470, Payment of Invoices.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, discussion.
So, question.
Um, so, I know we talked about vacancies amongst professional staff with our mean confer um, and how we arrange that, uh, I guess for the professional staff. And I think we came up with something in the staff handbook that we approved maybe two months ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I was, I was kind of curious on the wording because other technical change sections reflect in accordance with staff handbook. This one is with district established procedures. I know the teachers are, they're in a union, but as far as the collective bargaining stuff, it's all changed. So, I don't know if there's an actual agreement that covers anything, probably not. It's all under the staff handbook.
Correct, so the established procedures are the equivalent to the handbook.
So, because some say staff handbook, this one says established procedures.
You can make that handbook.
I feel like the handbook is more sandstone than just whatever the procedure might be. And maybe a representative from the teachers' union has an input on it.
Anybody here, anyway?
It could be more consistent. Yeah, I think anything that would be more consistent.
The only thing I could think of, and I, Molly, I don't know, the only thing I can think of is there any procedures regarding vacancies that aren't in the handbook? You know?
Well, either be in the handbook or board calls.
Right, but what I mean, like, there might be something, like, for example, you, when you send out the notices to the district on Fridays, is that part of the handbook? Or is that just part of our established procedures?
Well, we added that to the.
Okay, so, for, for the most part, all of our vacancy procedures are outlined in the handbook. So, that might be more specific.
Switch that to say.
Districts.
Yeah. That was my, uh, big question, so. Covered.
Good.
What else have you in discussion?
Andy, you want to read that back while you change that then?
I'm going to take established procedures and change them to district supply.
I think the same would apply for the support staff.
That is true.
Any, uh, further discussion on all those technical changes? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, same if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And all carries, and that's all I have for my. No other matters? No other matters that I see, that doesn't matter.
Thank you very much. Um, a reminder before we close, um, our next meeting is next Monday, the 12th, and we will be conducting interviews starting at four o'clock for the open board seat. After that, we're anticipating about 7:30, 7:30 and 8 o'clock, we'll be conducting our general meeting.
Is the order of candidates gonna stay the same that it was originally?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, okay.
They said our regular meetings after.
Our regular meetings after.
And, you know, can that all be live streamed or just?
Um, I think it's advised that we do not live stream the interviews.
Can somebody say something?
Probably for that reason.
We could certainly check with, with WASB.
Yeah, I have to remember what, yeah.
Sure, that we're in compliance. All right, that concludes our me, our meeting this evening and thank you very much for being here.